November sixth, two thousand twenty-five, we are in the Indianola Boardroom for our regular meeting. Please do note that the meeting was moved from Tuesday to today for election purposes. The building was pretty full with election workers and a lot going on on Election Day. So with that, we'll convene the meeting with roll call for quorum purposes.
Erickson here.
Here.
Arnold.
Here.
McIntyre.
Here.
Here, we do have a quorum at this time. Would you kindly rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any agenda deletions or corrections to note? Seeing none, first item on our agenda this morning is the consent agenda. All items will be listed under the consent agenda will be enacted by one motion. A, minutes to approve October twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five board meeting. B, October twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five special meeting closed. C, October twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five work session. D, October twenty-eight special meeting closed. E, October twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-five work session. B, approve new hire Kelly Jackson, driver's license specialist, treasurer's office effective November seventeen, two thousand twenty-five. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Make a mo- make a s- second.
Motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
DeWitt?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number two are claims. Claims this meeting, we have a figure of one hundred seventy-two thousand, three hundred five dollars and seventy-five cents. Do I have a motion on our claims figure?
Make a motion to approve the claims as read.
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
DeWitt? Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Claims are approved. Number three is consider proclamation for Operation Green Light with possible action.
I'll make a motion to approve, I guess, the reading of the proclamation for Operation Green Light.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Supervisor Erickson, would you like to read the proclamation?
Oh, no. You know what? I would like to defer that to one of our very own veterans, Crystal McIntyre.
Let's let one of the veterans read.
Ryan?
Okay.
Okay. Operation Green Light for Veterans, two thousand twenty-five proclamation. Whereas the residents of Warren County have great respect and admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces and whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Warren County sinks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civic service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in twenty-nine states to help fellow former service members access more than fifty-two billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately two hundred thousand service members transition to civilian communities annually, and an estimated twenty percent increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that four forty-four to seventy-two percent of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas Warren County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now, therefore, be it resolved with designation as a Green Light for Veterans County, Warren County hereby declares November fourth through the eleventh of two thousand twenty-five as a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of those transitioning from active service. And be it further resolved that in observation of Operation Green Light, Warren County will light the Justice Center green to show gratitude and show awareness. And be it further resolved that Warren County encourages its citizens to patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in a window of their place of business or residence from November fourth through the eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. By a quick show of hands, could anyone raise their hand if they are a veteran or served overseas or served anywhere in the military?
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing the building in green real soon. We have a motion, we have a second. Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
DeWitt? Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number four is consider proclamation for National Injury Prevention Day with possible action.
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation for National Injury Prevention Day.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? One of my colleagues like to read the proclamation.
I'll nominate Supervisor DeWitt.
Oh, Kayla, can you scroll up just a little bit or is that the beginning of the proclamation?
Okay. So whereas unintentional injuries are the leading cause of death for Iowans ages one through forty-four and the fourth leading cause of death for all ages. And whereas injuries and violence result in an annual average of twenty-two hundred deaths, fourteen thousand hospitalizations, and three hundred and eighty-seven thousand emergency department visits in Iowa. The number of injuries in Iowa is estimated to be higher due to the unknown number of individuals who've received other medical care or no care at all. And whereas injuries can result in a high cost to Iowans with average charges up to fifty-five thousand dollars per hospitalization and more than two thousand dollars per emergency department visit annually. Whereas, and whereas, in Iowa, the three leading causes of unintentional injury deaths in two thousand twenty-two were falls, motor vehicle crashes, and unintentional poisoning. And whereas, injuries whether intentional or unintentional are preventable within the state of Iowa. Warren County Board of Supervisors, in collaboration with the University of Iowa, Steed Families' Children's Hospital, and University of Iowa Hospitals and Clinics, the University of Iowa Injury Prevention Research Center, Iowa Department of Health and Human Services, and other partners across the state are committed to increasing public awareness and education around the prevention of injuries as we observe National Injury Prevention Day in Iowa and throughout the year. Now, therefore, we, Aaron DeCock, Chair, Crystal McIntyre, and Travis DeWitt, Brian Arnold, Stephanie Erickson, Warren County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim the day of November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five as National Injury Prevention Day.
Thank you, Supervisor. And did we already have a motion and a second on that?
Yes.
Do you got it, Kim? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Thank you. Number five is consider quotes for cameras at county yard and conservation with possible action. Good morning, Jamie.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just to follow up on your Operation Green Light, we did light the building green on the fourth and it'll continue through the eighteenth for Joel's thing, so.
Thank you.
We came to you guys in the work session last week for cameras at the county yard and for conservation. We did get the numbers back from Miller Electric, so conservation total costs with pulling the wire and the additional cameras. And if you remember, they were going to move some of the cameras that they had around, so their cost came in at fifteen thousand, two hundred sixty dollars and seventy-one cents. The county yard costs are forty-two thousand, nine eighty-three, sixty-five with the higher resolution, which was just around a thousand dollars higher than the lower resolution.
Can you restate the county number again? What was that, fifteen what?
The conservation?
Yeah.
Fifteen thousand, two sixty, and seventy-one cents.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. I think the only thing that we really didn't talk about last week, and I did ask Tim and Zach to be here to talk about budget and how they were going to be paid for. Originally, the conservation cameras came to us through Mark prior to his departure and trying to get them on the same camera system as everybody else, so we have the one vendor covering everybody to make things a little bit easier. And so at that time, there were some ARPA funds available. I know ARPA funds are out. I'll let those guys speak to the cost, but at that time, we had told Mark that we would help them out with the conservation costs. And I don't know about what Tim has in his budget after everything there, so that's kind of where we are on those.
Okay, thank you.
How many cameras are there going to be?
What's that?
How many cameras are there going to be? As just with conservation center period?
So I'll let Zach speak to the cameras that they're adding and what they already have there.
Sure, so we have six currently and we're adding six, increasing resolution. The Innet Nature Center has a lot of kids and youth programs out there.
Zach, do you want to come up?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. So the question was, how many cameras do we have? We currently have six and we're adding six. The Innet Nature Center is a primary youth education facility. For the most part, there's a lot of public meetings out there as well. One of the primary things that we need to be able to ensure is that safety and security is the number one priority as a public entity. Does that answer your question?
Uh, yeah. And these are going to be run twenty-four seven?
Yep. Yep. And we're trying to get on to the county system. So like currently, we're administering them as a separate agency, even though we're under the county umbrella. Logistically, it's been kind of an access issue, so pending that the county is able to support this, we can kind of homogenize management so we're not running two different systems.
But for number six, it's going to be eleven grand, eleven fifty thousand?
Fifteen thousand, correct.
Okay, and after the initial cost, there's a maintenance, even though everything is at, is that?
So there is no other reoccurring charges. So like that's a one in purchase and it's not like a subscriber membership or anything like that.
Thank you, Zach.
Well, maybe put out in the field to see if kids take off and if there's any kind of that.
We have them strategically placed to ensure that our properties and premises are efficiently monitored.
Okay.
Thank you, Zach.
Yep.
Is there any board discussion on it? Tim, did you have any thoughts on? Tim's in here. If you'd come up. Thoughts on funding, budget, and necessity for cameras at the shopyard?
Honestly, last I talked to Kim, she said, we talked and the budget wasn't really figured out. We'll make it work somewhere. I mean, obviously, you want the building to be covered, so we can move things around.
Sounds good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, any board discussion? Do we have a motion on the cameras?
I'll make a motion to approve the cameras for conservation and the county yard.
Second.
Any additional thoughts? Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
DeWitt? Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Number six is consider preauthorization guidelines for facilities and space customization requests with possible action.
Again, in last week's meeting, we talked about space modification requests. Those come through the facilities committee. We kind of sort through them and then bring those to the board. Traditionally, it was every time we would meet with, we'd get the space customization, get everything that we needed to bring to the board, and then get your approval. At our last meeting, there was talk about perhaps setting a threshold. And what we discussed last week was setting a five thousand dollar threshold for the facilities committee to go ahead and approve and then update you guys on a quarterly basis. In addition to that, it would be changes that were nonstructural. And then I think the board also asked that as long as it was within their budget. So those three things would allow us to go ahead and approve without having to bring it to you guys every time, and then we would just update you on a quarterly basis. And I believe Dawn created perhaps a resolution? She will.
So so long as it also meets that last requirement of within the budget?
Within their departmental budget.
Then their department budget, then I would be supportive of it. Okay.
Okay.
Does the board have a motion or want to discuss?
I'll make a motion to approve the space modification request.
Um, I think the wording should be a little different. Approve a threshold of five thousand for the facilities committee meeting. Yeah.
I guess that, I seen that as another agenda item, so.
I don't think it is.
Oh, yeah, I.
This is just the preauthorization guideline, so yeah, so so as a friendly amendment to the motion, I assume that Supervisor DeWitt wants to have the threshold at no more than five thousand, no structural, nonstructural, and within the department's budget for the year. And if those three items are met and the facilities committee is recommending it, then we don't have an issue. Is that, is that correct?
Yep, sorry, I was reading that.
That's okay.
Reading that wrong. So the, I will make a motion to approve the space modification request with a five thousand dollar threshold as long as it's in, it's nonstructural and presenting the board before approval. Is that correct?
And within their budget.
And within their budget, yep.
I will still second that.
Okay, now we have a motion and a second, and the resolution, I'm sure, will reflect just that. A motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
DeWitt?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. I think that'll be good for efficiencies because we, just so the public knows, we had one that was three hundred dollars, nonstructural. It comes to a work session. It's within the budget. Someone wants to change their desk minisculey, it's going to be okay. All right. Number seven, consider future budget amendment request from the county attorney with possible action. It is the Jamie Show.
It is the Jamie. Sorry, Doug's in trial today, so he asked me to talk on this. So in preparation for what nobody wants to hear, Dawn's retirement.
Oh, yeah.
Um, in January, we did go ahead and post last week and this week to try and gather some resumes. So attached, I did talk with Doug and for the salary range, we are asking for an amendment depending on what we bring the person in at, between eighty-two point five percent and eighty-five percent of Doug's salary. So the numbers are just a little under sixteen thousand and just a little over sixteen thousand, hoping that we can bring them in the beginning of December so that they have some time to work with Dawn. Fortunately, we do have a very, very, very good applicant, so we're really excited about that, hoping that you guys approve this and we can move on getting someone in here to start working with her. She's irreplaceable, but.
Unfortunately, Dawn's pretty, pretty bright, folks, so she knows that if we vote no on this, it isn't, it isn't changing what's coming in January.
I think she told me sixty-three days.
If it, if that's not right, let me know. Okay. And I suppose we better have someone shadow her, so I'm going to make a motion to approve what's going to amount to a budget amendment so that we can get someone hired early in December and that they can shadow our colleague and learn a lot before her retirement date in January.
Are we determining between the two thresholds? Because I'd just prefer to go at the eighty-five percent.
So if you look at my worksheet that I submitted, we also, she has a three thousand dollar payout on her sick leave, so that's included in that number. So the fifteen, eight thirty-seven, sixteen, two twenty-six covers that and the shadowing. I would agree with Supervisor Arnold's assessment on approving that.
It looks like you're giving us two options, so I'm just saying, I would throw my support behind the eighty-five percent option as opposed to the eighty-two point five percent.
Put a high end on the motion, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Second.
And a second now. Any additional board discussion?
Very happy. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
DeWitt? Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number seven, consider future, ah, there we go, we got that. Number seven passed. Number eight, consider approval of contract ID ninety-one, C zero nine one dash one four two for a bridge replacement on Sixty-Fifth Avenue over Branch South River with possible action. Good morning, Tim.
Good morning. We had another bridge go to Letting. This one is on Sixty-Fifth Avenue, just south of Monroe Street, southwest of Indianola. We had two big bidders on this project. Herberger Construction at eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy cents, and Dixon Construction at eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixteen cents. The engineer's estimate was just about eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, so we were under the engineer's estimate and under the programmed amount, so all the numbers are good. This project is getting paid from the federal highway bridge program funding, so it won't run through our local budget at all.
Awesome.
Wow.
Recommend awarding the contract.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract for the bridge replacement on Sixty-Fifth Avenue over Branch South River.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I did have a question for you, though, Tim. With the federal government currently being shut down, are, is that creating issues in your department yet on?
Not for active projects because like this federal funding agreement that we approved a year ago actually gives the state the, we have to work with the state for the funding, so.
Okay.
But it is creating a slowdown on, say, the R fifty-seven bridge that the contractor wants to get started on right now, but we're waiting for the USGS people to help us. They got a, they got a stream gauge there that needs to be moved before we can tear the bridge out, so right now, they're not supposed to be at work, so there is things like that to slow down. That shouldn't slow us down too much, but we'll have to go back to work before we can get it moved.
Got it, thank you, and I appreciate the insight. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion from the board? Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
DeWitt? Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Look forward to another bridge getting fixed. Number nine is request the Board of Supervisors give permission for an administrative audit on the coming precinct with possible action. Good morning.
Hi, good morning, thank you. I'm here to ask the board for a directive to proceed with an administrative audit for the coming precinct. And at the beginning of the morning, we had a jam on the machine, and after the machine jammed the first thing, I want to confirm that the three ballots did actually tally in the machine. There were ninety-four total ballots cast, and what that means is tomorrow, when we have our post audit from the state anyway, we would just run those ballots through another machine anyway, just to verify those results. I want to make sure those three ballots were counted accurately.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all the hard work you, your team, all the volunteers did.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to give permission for an administrative audit on the coming precinct.
Second.
Does this have to do with predators and everything on so many?
No.
No.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from the board? Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
DeWitt? Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Number ten, second reading, hearing to consider approval of chapter twenty-five regulating temporary residential use of campers and recreational vehicles on private property in Warren County, prens camper and RV ordinances. At this time, I'm going to make a motion to go into public hearing.
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
DeWitt? Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Aye, we are in public hearing, it is nine fifty-six. Travis, do you have additional thoughts on the proposed ordinance before us?
Well, I don't know that we officially read it. I think going through and doing a quick reading of it, and then I will, I'll throw my comments in after that, that'd be all right? So chapter twenty-five regulating temporary residential use of campers and recreational vehicles on private property in Warren County, camper and RV ordinance. Twenty-five point oh-one is the purpose. The Warren County Board of Supervisor finds it necessary to regulate the temporary residential use of campers, recreational vehicles, and similar temporary structures on private property in the unincorporated areas of Warren County in order to protect public health and safety, ensure proper sanitation and building standards, preserve rural and residential character of unincorporated areas of the county, and promote orderly development and permanent housing construction. The ordinance may be referred to by its short title, Camper and RV Ordinance. Twenty-five oh-two has listed definitions. For use in this chapter, the following terms are defined. Camper and recreational vehicle means a motorized or towable vehicle designed for temporary human habitation, including but not limited to motorhomes, travel trailers, fifth wheels, truck, campers, and recreational vehicles. Permanent dwelling, a structure intended for year-round occupancy constructed in accordance with applicable building codes and permitted by Warren County. Occupancy means residing in, sleeping in, or using a camper or RV for habitation for more than four hours in a twenty-four hour period. Building permit means an active valid permit issued by the Warren County for the construction of a permanent dwelling on the same parcel of land. Twenty-five oh-three is regulation of temporary occupancy. No person shall occupy and no property owner shall allow the occupancy of any camper or recreational vehicle as a residence on private property within unincorporated Warren County for more than twenty-one cumulative days with, within any consecutive sixty-day period unless one of the following conditions is met. A valid Warren County building permit has been issued for the construction of a permanent dwelling on the parcel and work has commenced or is ongoing. Or the camper or RV is located in a licensed campground or RV park authorized under county zoning ordinance. Or temporary hardship exemption has been approved by the Warren County zoning administrator pursuant to section twenty-five point oh-five of this ordinance. Twenty-five oh-four is conditions for authorized temporary occupancy. Twenty-five oh-four is conditions for authorized temporary occupancy. Where temporary occupancy is authorized by Warren County, the following minimum standards must be met. All waste, including sewage and gray water, must be disposed of in compliance with Chapter sixty-nine of the Iowa Administrative Code and Warren County Public Health and applicable county ordinances. Water and electrical connections must meet Iowa State Building Code and approved by the appropriate utility or inspection authority. The camper or RV must be kept in roadworthy habitable condition and not constitute a nuisance or health hazard. Twenty-five oh-five is temporary hardship exemptions. A property owner may request a temporary hardship exemption for up to six months in the following situations. One, home destruction by fire, storm, or other disaster. Two, ongoing construction under an active building permit delayed by factors beyond the applicant's control. Three, medical disability, medical or disability related to needs, related needs of the property owner, supported by documentation. All exemption requests shall be submitted in writing to the Warren County Administrator, including the reason for the requested temporary hardship exemption, expected duration, and any supporting documentation. The zoning administrator may approve, deny, or approve with conditions any such request. A one-time extension of up to ninety days may be granted upon written request and approval. The zoning administrator shall issue a written decision. Twenty-five oh-six, enforcement and penalties. Violations of this ordinance shall be enforced as county infractions pursuant to Chapter two of the Warren County Code of Ordinances. Each day a violation constitutes a separate offense. The Warren County zoning department and the Warren County Sheriff's Office are authorized to enforce this ordinance. Twenty-five oh-seven, severability clause. If any section, provision, or part of this ordinance shall be adjud, adjudged, adjudged, invalid, or unconstitutional, such adjudication shall not affect the valid, validity of the ordinance as a whole or any section. Paragraph, provision, or part thereof not adjudged, invalid, or unconstitutional. We've got the effective date as December first. Um, I know there's some chat about that, and that can be adjusted, um, as the supervisors see fit. But, uh, I guess I'll, I'll dive in with my comments. We've got what are starting to be some homeless communities pop up in Warren County. We've got some, some situations where, um, not even the property owners living on the property, but, but campers are being pulled in there and, uh, people living in them, not taking care of the property, not disposing of their waste correctly. Just not a good situation for anybody that lives around there. I've had some comments about, well, it's their property, you know, it's private property, they should be able to deal with what they want on their property. And I agree with that. You know, as a conservative Republican, I one-hundred percent agree with you there. But on the flip side, your neighbor shouldn't dictate what you get to do with your property by what they're doing with your property, or their property. So it's kind of a, a two-sided fence there. You know, the state has passed an ADU law, accessory dwelling unit. So you can have up to two, two dwellings on a property now. And for the prices, some of these campers, um, you know, you're talking upwards of fifty grand for a livable camper, something you could live in, um, you could, you could build a pretty decent little ADU for that. So I don't see the purpose of, uh, needing to live in campers. And with it, with it becoming a little bit of a problem in Warren County so far, I don't see it getting any better. So that's why I took the.
No, 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 you'll have a chance. But be respectful of the meeting though, okay?
I took the liberty of, uh, of writing this ordinance, um, listening to some of my constituents. So if anybody wants to be mad at anybody, be mad at me, cause I brought it to the Board. But, uh, I, I feel it's something we need to do in Warren County before, before it gets out of hand. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Travis. Alright, we're in a public hearing, so anyone from the public is welcome to speak. All I ask is that you come to the front, state your name, your address, you'll have three minutes, and we will hear from you at this time.
How you doing, though? My name is Robert Griffin, I live on Somerset Boulevard. Uh, I have a trailer out in back of my place, and I do tree service work. I just have some questions for you. I'm not mad at anybody, but I just wanted to find out, sometimes I have them, they stay there for extended periods. I turned sixty-five and I need help. So does that count in all this situation that you just mentioned? Like if someone's on the property and they're working for somebody, let's say, and they're there for six months, you know, like through the summer, stuff like that? Does that fall underneath this situation?
It would. I will throw in there that, you know, the, Warren County and all of their ordinances are a, uh, uh, reaction, not a, they're reactive, not proactive. So if you're, you're living in the camper, you've got a helper living in the camper, they're keeping it up nice and, and nobody's complaining, chances are the county's not coming out there. I will say, does, does the camper ever move?
Uh, this is like a trailer.
Well, this would not, this would not, you're talking a mobile home. This isn't a camper or an RV.
No, sir.
Okay, then no, this would not affect that.
Okay, how about somebody with a fifth wheel? That pulled in on the property, um, they got permission, they're doing rent or something like that from somebody, but they're doing upkeep on the property because the house burnt there. And they're clearing off the land, you know, uh, the wreckage and everything from the, the house burning.
I would lean back on the, if they've got a building permit to rebuild that property in the near future, then, then they're gonna have permission to, to be out there with a building permit, just as the code reads. But if it's something that they just, the house burnt down, no one's got any intention of building a, another house, um.
Well, the lady who owns the property, um, she just got some money and she don't know how much mu, she's gonna have to start on the property, or if she's gonna have enough or anything else.
Yeah, there, there's a fire exemption in the, in the ordinance, or so.
That's what I was asking about.
So, so if, uh, if there's a residential property and it, and it has a, a fire, storm, flood, whatever, and someone moves the camper in, in the meanwhile, there's an exemption that there's not gonna be an issue with it. Now, if it's five years later and, and the property, they collected the insurance check, they've left the property, the residence, um, unfixed up, still in, you know, whatever condition it was, then, then yes, then it would. But as long as they're, um, they're within that window, there, there's not gonna be an issue.
Next question here. Let's see, uh, I have an aunt, she's on a fixed income. She doesn't have any other way established, she's using a fifth wheel. She pulled in on my private property, she's at, in back there, she's got electric hooked up, she doesn't have water, but she has her sewage taken off. You know, somebody comes and picks it up. What about a situation like that?
Yeah, the, the ordinance would be, it would be violative of the ordinance, it would be against the ordinance to, to have an additional camper, um, long-term as a residence in the county, so correct.
Yeah, if she put up a skirting and stuff like this, took off the tires, would that be a, considered a permanent dwelling, which you have to put in sewer and everything else?
That, that, that really hits at the crux of why this came before the Board, is because there's a lot of, there's a lot, it's not just the few. There's a lot of campers that are not, that are not hooked up to anything remotely considered a septic field or, or sewer. And, and what's happening is it's unsanitary, it's getting dumped in our creeks, it's getting dumped on our trails, and that's probably why this is before us. So if it's not hooked up to a sewer, um, and, and people are living in a camper for past that twenty-one of sixty days, or whatever the ordinance says, then, then yes, then it would be potent, I mean, it would be a violation of the ordinance. Will it come before the zoning commission? It's gonna come before it, as Travis sort of alluded to, on a complaint-based, um, reactionary period. So like, if someone puts a camper in their back part of their, uh, their, their property, they're not bothering anyone, they're not making a mess of things, they're not dumping sewer down the, down the creek bed, and the neighbors aren't saying anything, it's not really getting on zoning's radar.
Yeah, I'm talking about, I'm asking for somebody else to find out this information, like an elderly person. They put him behind, uh, their niece or nephew's hot place, they don't have any other place, they don't wanna go into assisted living, and they don't have the money for it, for one. And, but she had a fifth wheel.
Yeah, the, the.
As long as no one's complaining, everything's neat and nice and orderly.
That's a, that's a real roll of the dice of risk, because one complaint and the.
Understandable.
And, and all of a sudden, i- if they're violating the ordinance, they're violating the ordinance, and, and that game's gonna end, because the county is not desirous of having.
I understand, I agree with what you're saying.
A large swath of our population living in a camper.
The homeless and stuff like this, they really trash out the place. I've seen quite a few places out there, even by Somerset. So, that's all I got.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak? You're good, you state your name, your address, and you've got three minutes. I'm usually pretty generous if people go over just a nick here or there, so.
My name's Kathy Kimsey, one nine two four four Roosevelt, uh, Milo. And, uh, I wanted to share three examples of why this concerns us, and then just one question on it. Uh, one, um, had a homeless, a gal become homeless a couple of years ago, had two small children. Uh, we heard about the incident, she even had taken her pets to Cuyahoga. Um, our concern was her staying with these kids, because this was a temporary thing, but she didn't know how long it would take her. Um, it was a domestic situation, and she was literally just out. Uh, we offered to bring our fifth wheel in, we made sure, my husband was a mechanic electric, electrician, sorry, mechanical electrician. Made sure it was hooked up safe, she did not use any water in the camper, did not use the bathroom, kitchen, she used the house that, uh, another person let her put it next to. So there was no sewage, no issues like that, but it gave her someplace to be with the boys, their own time, their private, uh, environment. It kept her from having to go to a shelter and let her build up her independence and get some help that she desperately needed. This was through, uh, I'm gonna say this was about four months that she used it, four to five months. So that's one example I wanted to put out there of where this can, you know, possibly be important to consider the wording on all of this. The other example is we have a fa, a family member, uh, an in-law, whose, uh, grandfather passed away, elderly nineties, grandma's still with us, with them. The son and, one of the son and daughters moved their fifth wheel in, so mom, so she could, that mom can stay in her home. She's ninety-two or ninety-three, um, otherwise it would be a nursing home, and right now, with that being six to eight thousand dollars a month, if you have any money in the bank, it did not make sense to do that to her. Plus she had just lost her husband. They may be there, you know, if she, we hope she's here for many, many years. It is Warren County. And again, this is another of that wording issue, they are not using the bathroom, they're right by the house, they're using the house for all of the needs. But again, it gives them a private place. As a caregiver, if you've ever done that, you do need your separation from the constant care of somebody. It's allowing her to stay in the home, they're able to help. It was a great thought, this is concerning, um, because they don't know how long they'll be there. And yes, they can come ask you guys, but at the same time, do they need that added stress? So it's the wording that is where I guess my main concern is. And then the other example is, uh, we have, we have family that come and stay for multiple, uh, different weekends, you know, the balloons, the, the Knoxville races, all these different things. We pop our fifth wheel open, we do the same thing, we don't use the water in the sewer, we do a lot of camping, sorry.
You're good, you're good.
And so it's just another one of those concerns when this says, you know, sometimes I go out for my own peace of mind, take a nap in my camper, I might be out there more than four hours.
And again.
Such an odd.
And, and again.
Shorter than twenty-one days, the ordinance is twenty-one days.
Yeah.
I think, I think.
Well, it was a four-hour.
Well, that's just the definition of residing in a camper.
Right, and so I'm, it's just, we utilize it a lot, especially with a lot of our family being out of state and out of, uh, Indianola. And so we've never, we get, get along great with the neighbors, that's not an issue. So I don't, I know for our situation, we're probably absolutely fine, but I did, I think we need to look at it as the broad picture. That's why I wanted to make comments.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, we do.
So, and then my one comment also then was, where does this fall? As far as like, if someone were to complain, is that dump, is that putting that onto the sheriff's department then? Or does it come to you guys first and then it goes out? You know, what kind of protocol will they have for that? That was my other thing. But thank you, that's all.
You're good, appreciate it. Yeah, and, and just so the public knows, like, I think that there's, there's a, there's a distinction right out of the chute that, that got, that I picked up there, and then maybe a little bit with the other comment. I mean, if I'm just being real with people, there's a little bit of a distinction in my mind between having a, a residential property in the county that also has a camper, um, either that the, the homeowners use, or, you know, has guests come over for periods of time, you know, a weekend or a week, or two weeks, or whatever, um, versus a one-acre parcel of property that has no residence on it, that someone drags a camper down, maybe gets it there once, roadworthy or not, and then it just sort of melts into the ground, but there's no home there. And that, that is a, that's a pretty big distinction to me for a variety of reasons. And I, I will, I will share my initial thoughts early on it, but I'll reshare them again at the end, but it, it, it matters. It matters to me a little bit, and there's definitely a di, distinction between having, um, someone spend some time there, having a fire, building a home, um, and, versus long-term living. And then even on long-term living, I've got a little bit of a hang-up between, is there a residence already established there? Or is this just someone's one-acre, you know, parcel that, that you've drug three campers to, and now we're having a, a camper quasi-homeless shelter there? And those are different for a lot of reasons, including taxes, but. Sure, come on up.
I'm sorry. The other thing that I think for me that this falls under is, we also pay insurance on all of our, we've got a motorhome and a fifth wheel. We pay insurance, we pay the tags, we pay our, you know, of course, our land insurance. So for liability issues, things like that, I will say, I think that's kind of important to have. If someone's taking the care to put their tax, their, pay the taxes, pay their insurance on the, you know, fifth wheel and camper, more than likely, they're gonna put more care into following, you know, sanitation. I mean, I'm sorry, I've lived out there twenty-five years, I'm not dumping nothing on my ground. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. A lot of these things might not have to get addressed if other people sort of felt similar.
But I do think tax and insurance on those.
And roadworthiness, like, there's a difference between whether or not a, an RV can move, or did it melt into the ground?
Yes, so.
Thank you. Alright, still public, uh, public hearing, anyone is welcome to speak, we wanna hear from you, if you're inclined. Folks might say a lot of things about me, but they're never gonna say I didn't give you a chance to talk, so, and I actually listen. Michaela, is there anybody online? No comments from Cyber World? Last call for the room, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this topic? Seeing none, I'm gonna make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
DuWitt?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Aye, public hearing portion is closed. Supervisor discussion period begins. Who would like to?
Okay.
Provide their thoughts regarding effective date, regarding anything that, that's before us, or regarding the ordinance? We'll hear from you.
Okay, I have a, I have a few things I'd like to just reiterate, this is an ordinance that will be complaint-driven. So Warren County is not having people going around looking for people in campers. Someone will have to call and wage a complaint with the county before we would investigate something like this. So it's not like we're having, um, the camper police out here. You know, if you have a camper, you have a house, you have a camper parked, RV parked on your property alongside a house, to me, that's, you, you have an RV parked on your property. That's not what this ordinance is aimed towards. To me, that's, you, you have an RV parked on your property. That's not what this ordinance is aimed towards. Secondly, uh, y- you have twenty-one, there's twenty-one cumulative days. So you can, you, you can camp on, yeah, within sixty. So you, you, you can park on a piece of ground and you can stay there for twenty-one cumulative days within a sixty-day period. And then after sixty days, you can come back and stay there for three more weeks. So we're not, we're not going after people camping. Okay, this isn't an anti-camping ordinance as well. Um, the other thing is, I do believe, um, with, with our, uh, citizen that just commented, I think there is an importance to add the language of having the, um, RVs or campers also licensed. I think we had some discussion in the past that that would kind of fall into roadworthiness. But I would personally also like it to say licensed. Um, if it's, if it's something that's supposed to be licensed, um, I, I think that would be important to add to the ordinance. And with that said, this being the second reading and the date of, uh, December twenty-first or December first? What's our date on here?
December first.
Yeah, I, I am not in favor of extending the date. I mean, it may be necessary to extend the date if we're gonna change the ordinance. I understand that. But I think that, um, situations in the county that just need to be addressed and I'd, I'd like to get the ordinance, um, enacted sooner than later. If we want to make changes to it, if it needs to be reread again, that's what we're gonna have to do. But I'm not in favor of extending the date, um, for enforcement purposes. This is something that other counties are dealing with and they are, they're doing it. So we just need to figure out, um, how it needs to be done. We need to get it done.
Thank you, Brian.
Yes.
That might dictate the effective date a little-
Okay, abs- absolutely. And I'm, I'm aware of that. Maybe the date's not December first, but I would rather have it sooner than later, soon as possible.
Okay. Any other board thoughts?
Yeah. Um, I have a question, Dawn. In these readings, it's just what's before us. We can't add or delete anything from it without starting over the process, correct?
You can.
We can? Okay, all right, great.
Better be in final form.
Okay, I got you. Thank you so much. Okay. So with that said, um, maybe we need to make things clear because it seems like the public, seems like we're going after people who have these circumstances where they're having to live in a camper. Um, I think maybe we need to make that a little more clear. Uh, I don't know if there should be a provision for applying for an extended stay. It, I, I mean, I don't want the government in my business if I have to put somebody on my land. Um, but I, I don't know if that just needs to be spelled out in the ordinance so that we don't have any, to know exactly who and what we're going after, instead of we having to tell you why this ordinance was written, tells me that there's a problem with the language. Um, and then my problem came up at the work session where enforcement. Um, I am not for hiring anybody to go out and enforce this. That is not something I want to do because I think it might turn into seeing someone in a camper and then, I, 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 I'm not interested in that part, but I know that there has to be some way to enforce this. So that's, I guess, my question to the board is how are we gonna enforce this? And it, does this fall under the sheriff and the county attorney or is this something that just zoning? My interpretation of Iowa code is that if you have an ordinance for the zoning, uh, department, then it's the zoning department that has to go and enforce this. So are, are we creating something that we're gonna have to then pay somebody to go do? Uh, I'm, I'm just not interested in that, that. And that came up at the last one and I've had a lot of conversations and thoughts of my own. Um, I want to get rid of the problem, but I don't know how that goes about, um, without hiring someone. And, and even if we hire someone, they don't have the authority to go in and do anything other than find someone. I don't want to put them in a, uh, situation where they're dealing with someone who's on drugs or possibly put them in harm's way. So it, these are just some of the concerns that I've been thinking on. No, ma'am. No, ma'am. Not at all. It, we cannot hire somebody to go out and enforce this when there may be someone who is gonna endanger the person that we hire.
Well, I, I think if we're, if we're just being realistic on this, if the ordinance passes and we've got a violation or we need to go look at it, I mean, I, I just, for the life of me, struggle with, why wouldn't, why wouldn't a sheriff's deputy be involved in, in this? That, that's effectively what you need. And that's, that's going to be easy to accomplish if we actually have an ordinance that they can follow. What you can't do, in my estimation, and I've, I received a phone call on a noise complaint in the county as an example recently. And they, they said it was pretty loud and they didn't like hearing the neighbor playing some music at a, at a shop or whatever. And they called the sheriff's, um, department to voice their, uh, discontent with the, the music. And the response is, we don't have a noise ordinance. So putting law enforcement in a position to police the unincorporated part of the county without the ordinance doesn't work, folks. That, that's why I think most of the board and a number of people want to have a camper RV ordinance. So I'm, I'm just seeing the pushback on the, well, the enforcement part might not be perfect. How do we do this? And the reality is, is you get an ordinance that has some teeth, it's complaint-based, the neighbors call in, and now the sheriff's department and maybe someone from zoning with a, a little bit decent understanding of the ordinance or other things, goes out there and investigates it. And if it meets the violation of the ordinance, then a letter gets put out there with a timeframe to fix it. And if they don't fix it, then the county attorney and the presumably zoning department says, you know, here's the violation. Here's a, here's where you're, you've gone wrong and fine, start racking up. We, we're making this harder than it needs to be. But if, if we keep kicking the can down the road on-
Right.
The ordinance, the sheriff's department doesn't need to catch flak or blowback because there's not an ordinance that, that you want them to enforce. That, that can't happen. I mean, your neighbor might be a horrible person that plays loud music on Saturday night and it's not good music. I don't know, it's bad music. And you don't like to hear it. So call them up and what are they gonna tell you? There's no noise ordinance, right? Um, if there's a camper ordinance and they have something to follow. Now, if then, the sheriff's department, the zoning department and the county attorney aren't following through on a complaint-based violation, then we've got other things to address. But if we don't move an ordinance, um, that's addressing what I think most people on the face of it understand as an issue, then they're, you're not getting anywhere, folks. Like, that's, that's what the county's done for the last ten years and it's getting worse. So again, I do appreciate the comments from, um, Kathy, Kathy K. from Milo. Um, and I do think, um, just for the public's benefit, I do think that there is a distinction between having a residential property that has a camper on it, that maybe sometimes is used, like within the camping spirit of the, of, of thinking versus lifetime moving someone in. But those happen sometimes, but what I see happening more than not is someone's got a, a ten-acre piece of ground or a three-acre piece of ground and one camper shows up and then another couple campers show up and there's no residence there. So, so think that through. Like, not everything is about taxes. I know that some people think tha- that of me and it's not the case, but just as the tax example of it. Michaela, can you pull up a, a Beacon property, just some random one? Find like a one-acre, two-acre, non-home site.
It's not random anymore. You're like, find your neighbor's two acres. There's a lot of conditions on it now.
Fine, here, here, I'll, I'll summarize it for you. If you've got a, a, a two or three-acre parcel of ground in the county, or a ten-acre even, and you look up what that looks like if it's ag-based, the, the, the total tax bill on that's probably three hundred dollars, maybe four hundred dollars, something. It might be less, might, could be less. So, so here's, here's the issue with it. If we start making, um, small little communities of campers that, that aren't roadworthy, don't move, and you start putting people in these things, um, you know, if, what, pick your school district. If it's in Indianola and it's three hundred dollars, Indianola School District will take three, two hundred dollars. What do you got? Oh, two, two hundred of the three hundred dollars will go to your school district. I mean, how many kids is that educating, folks? Right? It's not. I mean, a, a, a teacher's salary is probably fifty thousand dollars a year. And if the, if you need some more space because we've decided to move in a large population from Polk to Camper City in Warren County or whatever, um, there's some resources there. There's some cost to it. And what you're seeing is whatever the property owner is, they maybe pay two hundred dollars of the three hundred dollar tax bill. So when I hear people say, well, I'm paying my fair share, well, I'm not so sure. Um, you know, if there's a couple, three, four kids there, that, and it doesn't exactly work pencil out real well for the math side of things. And then the county would get a hundred bucks or whatever. But it, that's with no home there. We, the county can't have that. Like, we can't, we can't have that throughout the county of no actual residences and just campers on, on these, on these, you know, one-off places. Or, or grandma owns fifty acres and, you know, her grandson, um, you know, decides to haul a camper down there and live there. And there's no, there's no pro, there's no tax base on it. So like, that's an issue as well. But yeah, my, 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 my point, long-winded, was without an ordinance, it's pretty darn hard for the sheriff to go police something. Because I, I did hear from the person with the, the noise complaint, uh, that the response, I mean, I think the sheriff honestly, or the deputy went to the person and was like, hey, can you do the right thing here? And what else are they supposed to do? I mean, people want them to enforce rules that don't exist. They can't do that. Doug, um, Doug's not gonna prosecute a case without the law on his side. No one likes to lose. So if we don't have an ordinance-
Well, I, I'm not saying no ordinance. I'm just-
How we, how we police it? I, and I, and I think that, I think realistically, there will be some blowback because there are some campers that are doing activities that probably aren't lawful, right? I mean, that, that exists for, and I understand that there might be a, a, a person that's, um, you know, in between positions or has a domestic deal and needs a spot to sit. That, that's, that's a little different than, hey, I'm setting up shop here and I'm gonna trash the place and my camper's not roadworthy and I'm gonna start doing drugs there or making drugs or what, or what. I mean, if we, if we don't, if we don't address it, we're, we're not gonna get there. But I, I don't see how the sheriff's department would not be involved in the enforcement aspect for safety reasons, for a lot of reasons.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to, I see Sheriff Carrico is here and, um, get his take on it. Um, because we are asking, and I think this is what I said in our last work session, we're asking our sheriff's department to, to enforce this. And so we need to make sure they're comfortable with that and that it's, your team can handle that because-
Sure.
Enforce it.
Joe, would you like to speak to that?
Welcome back to the enforcement sessions you had on there. I guess the way I sit here as it was read through and seeing it, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a team effort. We're gonna get the call at ten o'clock at night. We're gonna get the call at ten o'clock at seven. One of the other offices that maintain these records are open. Um, I guess the way I kind of see the mission to plan out, uh, as it was read, is we're gonna go do the additional investigation of it. We're in over zone. Uh, once the records are obtained, we will, we'll then go with the county sheriff's office. This isn't something where you, and I know speeding isn't an ordinance, it's a state law. We see somebody speeding around, we go, we take action, we make it immediate, it's done, it's addressed. This isn't gonna be that way. This is going to take a couple of days. The, the only, the only concern I would have, and I was intending to draft an email out for between now and third reading, the, the resident from Milo, I think she brought some very good concerns. And I think there does need to be some verbiage in there on that. It's just where our, the work reactive that go around, complaint-driven that go around. I understand the intent there or what I think is the intent there, but at the same time too, I, I think the ordinance needs to be concise on what we are expecting to enforce. Not gonna turn blind out of somebody because we like them and cite somebody else because we don't like them. I, I think it needs to be clear on what we're expecting to enforce. I think the enforcement is gonna be a live record as far as us as well. Us, we can the sheriff's office, the, uh, zoning office and the county sheriff's office and the prosecution.
Right, thank you.
Specific questions?
Thank you for the clarification on the enforcement because that's exactly what my fear is, that we have this and that we really can enforce it because we didn't spell that out. So, thank you.
Agree with a lot of the things Sheriff just said and, um, there's, there's some vague points in here. And I think we're setting ourselves up for disappointing residents if we're not very clear. And we can sit and tell Kathy K. from Milo, you know, we're not gonna mess with you. But we don't have anywhere in here that it is complaint-driven. And who's to say, what if she, what if she gets a neighbor that doesn't like her? You know, and I think she seems like a wonderful woman. I think everybody would like Kathy K. So, um, but, you know, that's the thing. It's, it's very vague and I think it sets us up for failure. Um, totally supportive of, we need to do something specifically. I feel like a couple properties that are very out of control and are creating a lot of public health risk and safety violations in our, in our county. And so those are just my thoughts. And, and while I might vote no today, it has nothing to do with not wanting to, um, pass an RV ordinance. What I want to do is make sure we have the right verbiage.
Right.
Um, and we can enforce it. And right now, I, I'm just not sure we're there.
I would, I'd like to add, I, most of our ordinances are complaint-driven and I don't think any of them say that they're complaint-driven. I'm not sure that's something you would put in ordinance.
True.
Probably not.
You don't wanna, yeah, right.
Probably doesn't make Kathy feel like reassured though. We're telling her in a meeting, but, you know, we might not be sitting here in a few years and-
E- exactly.
When I read the ordinance, to me, it is, I, I, it seems clear. It seems well-written to me. I'm okay with moving it forward. The only exception is twenty-five point oh-four, number three. I would like it to say, the camper or RV must be licensed and kept in roadworthy habitable condition and not constitute a nuisance or health hazard. Other than that one minor change, I'm supportive of the ordinance.
Dawn, just so I'm clear, um, if I made a motion to approve as read, we have this in our work session after this meeting. Can we make amendments to this during that work session? Bring it back for the third reading so that we stay a little bit on track with this?
Yep.
Okay.
Great.
So I will make a motion to approve this as read and we can take it to the work session after this and we can make some amendments.
Okay.
Clean up some things and keep moving this forward so that we're not-
If you want to hit the eighteenth of November for the final reading-
Exactly.
You need to do it.
I, so, second.
We have a motion and a second. Board discussion, I would say, I'll tell the public, I'm also supportive of licensed as part of the roadworthy deal. That's an objective test. That's something where, that's something that, that will further delineate, um, you know, nineteen sixty-eight RV swinger that's melted-
You know, 1968 RV swinger that's melted into the ground versus something else where people are residing, right? If it, if it's not licensed, if it's not roadworthy, that's a pretty objective test. If someone's living in it, we gotta, we, we gotta, you got a problem with the ordinance right out of the chute. That makes it easier to patrol it, to, to, um, to make a decision on. In our work session, I think we should also, as a board, consider. 25.05 temporary hardship exemptions. Where, where we might be able to catch some sort of a. Um, you know, a domestic abuse situation where someone needs to be in a camper for a bit longer than 21 of 60 days. I mean, I'm not saying an indefinite deal. I'm not saying also that I'd be supportive of having, um, you know, a, a, a parent or something living for, for 10 years in a camper. I'm not there, but I do think that we might be able to, to work in an additional temporary hardship exemption. To soften the language without, without running contrary to what we're really going for. And it's pretty clear what we're really going for is nuisance problem campers that are doing drugs and, and wrecking their neighborhood. And dumping sewer and gray water. That, that's, that's what we want to get rid of, that's what I want to get rid of. But do I really want to wrap up? Every, every person that, that, uh, has a, a residence? I, that would be one of my conditions in that work session was do, is there a residence on the property? I mean, for tax purposes, that, that's part of it. Um, and then two, could we do something of like a, a six month na- nature with some sort of a, a permit? I guess I would still, I'd still want the homeowner to come to zoning and say, hey, I've got this situation. And I'd like to have someone stay up to six months. And, and this, and that's going to catch some without having it be a. Multi-year deal. Um, so that's something I would be supportive of addressing in the work session next. But we do have a motion, we do have a second, is there any other board discussion on the RV ordinance?
Do you want to say one more thing? And I appreciate all the conversation and I am, I am in support of this. Once we nail down some of these things like 2503, 2505, um. So while my vote today is going to be no, because this is not the version that I, I think is going to make it successful. I do hope in the third reading, we button this all up in our work session and it will be hopefully unanimous.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, roll call for reading number two.
Erickson?
No.
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Number 11, presentation regarding Main Street and Wonder on Buxton ARPA funding.
Well, this is me, um, so I will, um, I'm just going to do a quick presentation about what we already approved funding for. And then you all will have to make a decision, I'll step back from the table, I am on the board of Indianola Main Street. So I will not vote on any of this. But, um, in September, the Indianola Main Street Director came to us and asked if we. Could use ARPA funds that were already designated for this project, Wonder on Buxton. To put in two new sculptures on the Justice Center grounds. And I hope you've seen those, they're very bright, um, they are picture frames, they were very popular first couple of weeks, you see lots of selfies in them. The one thing that, uh, the Main Street Board did not take into consideration was that we were going to have some concrete costs. With associating with, um, fixating these permanent signs there. So there is, I believe, a little bit of money left in the ARPA fund for Wonder on Buxton. And I asked Megan to look into that. I did not give her enough time, I just asked her today, so if she doesn't have the answer, um. 4,550. And so their question was, they had about, I believe, $2,800 in concrete costs for the installation of these. As well as they are going to get banners that will be on Buxton and go all the way around the square. Those banners will, hasn't been 100% finalized, but that's what they would like to use the additional funding for. Um, that would be left after the sculpture. So that is the request, they are asking if they can access into that, uh, Wonder on Buxton ARPA funds again. That's all I have. And if you want to see these, I have them up here, I'm going to pass them down. They are, I believe, one is six foot and I think one is, maybe they're both six feet, they're pretty tall.
I like how there's no sharp jagged edges on it.
None, none whatsoever, very smooth.
Dawn, is there any issue with using the remaining ARPA funds?
Already allocated for that.
Okay. Okay.
And Stephanie, the, the concrete cost?
Around $2,800, I believe, and that was done by a local.
Okay, but that's also included in the, the ARPA funds?
Yes, that, so that would be, that was just cost we did not anticipate when, uh, we were ordering the signs and they came to the board and asked for the money for the signs. Um, and then that cost came in, so Main Street did cover that. However, since there is additional funding left, they'd like to ask for reimbursement on that if they could out of that fund.
And that's going to. Reduce their.
I haven't either.
Budgets for banners then, is that?
Yes.
The way you would look at it?
Yes, and they, um, have budgeted that. With their concrete cost and the remaining, there is enough for them to order the banners. And I believe that the banners are going to illuminate great things that happen, um, in Warren County as well as in Indianola. But don't quote me, we don't have those finalized, those are just things we're exploring.
Okay. Since it appears my colleague's going to recuse herself from the vote or making a motion or seconding the motion. Does anyone have a motion on the Main Street and Wonder on Buxton ARPA backfill funding?
Well, I'll say first, it's, uh, it's kind of cool. Um, some of these, these things, just to kind of dress up downtown. They, they do mean a lot to people, whether they realize it or not. Um, this is, this is money that was to be spent on stuff like this or big community projects, uh, public interest projects. Um, so I have zero issues with, with throwing a little money at this. It does bring up morale, um, when you do see stuff like this and. To just dress it up and, and let the community know that, you know, there's, there's a lot of proud people in the community and they want, they want the nice things. And they want the, the, uh, the pride to show. So I would, uh, I'd make a motion to approve the Wonder on Buxton. Um, the Main Street and Wonder on Buxton ARPA funding.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any board discussion? Roll call please.
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number 12 is receive and file reports, we have a report from the Veterans Affairs Department. I'll make a motion to receive and file the Veteran Affairs Report.
Second.
Roll call please.
Erickson?
Aye.
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 I, so filed number 13 Supervisor's Report, would anyone like to, uh, share anything? I will.
He's so excited about that.
Well, I am excited about it. Um, we had elections again on Tuesday. I don't, I don't know, because we won't canvass it until probably next week, Wednesday. Um, and I did see that there was some, uh, a little higher turnout in Indianola than Norwalk. Um, but I, I did want to tell the public my general thoughts on the local and city elections. Um, starting with this. Anyone whose name was on that ballot for anything. Like, I, I appreciate you, I appreciate you, that takes some effort. It is really easy in 2025 to, to get on social media. To, uh, hit a like or a thumbs down on a comment or go to a news article. And, and get there and, and type your, your two cents there. I get it, I do it sometimes, I engage sometimes. But it's not real effective, folks, it's just not all that effective. Like, if you want to have, um, some change, if you want to have a different direction for city and local. Things, which I would tell you really matter to you. I know that the feds get all the play and sometimes the state house, but you know, the buck really stops at that local level. These races are really important. I mean, really important for your day-to-day life as a Warren County citizen. So earlier this year, when we had, um, pretty, pretty full rooms about the reassessment. I heard from so many people that, um, seemed very, very concerned about property taxes. And I know that property taxes is going to be one of the absolute main issues that our Gold Dome legislators are going to be working on this year. But it seemed like it was a very big concern to you. And I just want to put just some general numbers together for you so that you can think on it a little bit. But let's say you live in an incorporated area of the county, maybe Indianola or Norwalk or Carlisle or Milo. So, and you have a property tax bill that you clearly do not like. Understood, heard it loud and clear. If I'm being real about that, let's say your property tax bill is $5,000. So you got a pretty nice home. Um, you know, between the school district and your local city. Approximately 80% of your property tax bill will go to those two taxing entities, right? So 5,000, simple math, 80%, $4,000 of your bill goes to the school and the city if you live in one. Now, if you live in the rural unincorporated part of the county, then I would tell you that your school district probably sees 65% ish. And the county would see about 35% ish. And there's some other smaller, um, smaller ones that are in there too, but, you know, something like that. So my point is. If you, if, if you care about your property tax bill, then get involved in these local races. Both our board, because we make up about 20% of your property tax bill, um, 18, 19, 20%. But also get involved with your school board, who makes up a larger chunk, or your city if you live in one. And if there's no one on the ballot to run, like Norwalk was very uncontested. We had three school board members and three vacant seats. We had two on the city council and two names on the ballot. So there, and there was no bond referendum, so there was really not a lot of contentiousness up there. And I bet you, we'll find out soon, Kim will sh- share, I bet we're probably at 10% of the people vote. And that 10%, that means 90% of the eligible voters said, this isn't, I don't need to, I don't need to be involved. I don't need to be involved, but I'm telling you, like, flashing red lights, folks. If you care about property taxes and 80% of that bill is decided, because we have what we call in America. You know, you can't have taxation without representation. These are your representatives, these are the people that will set your levy rates, including us for the, for the county portion. But if you don't engage, if you don't find a candidate to support and run who thinks like you, whether or not they think like me, I don't even care. Just get involved, run yourself or vote. If you don't do these minimum things in our republic, then by all means. Continue to state whatever you want to state on your social media and snarky comments or whatever. You can, I'm not saying you can't, you can, you got a First Amendment right to say whatever in the world you want to say. But it's not effective, right? It's not getting you where you want to go. So if you actually are passionate about these things, then you better get involved. I'm not saying if you don't, if you don't get involved, then you can't complain. You can complain, it's America, complain all you want, but you're not, you're not doing anything. So like, hear that message, folks, because it matters. And I think we're going to see maybe 15% turnout in Indianola, maybe. And I bet countywide, we're probably 10 or 12%, something like that. And that is abysmal, that is abysmal if you truly care about your property taxes as an example. That's my two cents, so get involved. If you don't want to run or can't run, then go talk to your friends, your neighbors, your people you hang out with and go find someone to run who thinks like you. And cares about whatever it is that you care about. Cause if you don't, then you do have taxation with representation. You just didn't engage on the representation part, so then you're going to kind of get what you get. So, that's my two cents, I'm off my soapbox.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, public input, number 14, comments will be limited to three minutes per individual. The board's not going to take any action on the comments due to the requirements of the open meetings law, but may do so in the future. We also frequently do, I listen to the comments, I write them down, we write them down and we often bring them up in a work session. Um, no public input will be allowed for any of today's agenda items. Is there anyone from the public or online who'd like to have a public input? All right, next meeting, number 15, will set for November 18th, 2025, that's 6:00 PM, that's a night meeting. Uh, our board has continued, uh, this year and 25 to run every other regular meeting at night. We do that for your benefit. We do that because sometimes people are working during the day at 9:30 and can't make our morning meetings. And so while that is wildly inconvenient to our staff. And night meetings are, are, are not as much fun from many other perspectives. It is a benefit to you to continue to host those at night. Um, we do keep track of attendance on those and I, I'm telling you, if, if we get two or three people that continuously show up or less to the night meetings. We have to figure out what we're going to do in January. Anyways, it's, uh, 6 o'clock, November 18th. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second, roll call please.
Aye.
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 I, we're adjourned, thank you all for your time.